We will have student and school presentations, parent groups, open to the public, three minutes per speaker, superintendent's report, correspondence and board comments. We will then have our consent agenda. We will not be using a second executive session, and we will then adjourn the meeting. I'm happy to say we do not have any corrections to the agenda this week. Do we have any students or school presentations tonight?
Hello. I'm Fran McCurtis. I'm a co-adviser to the National Honor Society, and I have with me Abby Wood and Zach DiVerio. He is the vice president of the Honor Society, and we wanted to talk about last time we were here, we talked about the movie night that we were going to have for valuables for veterans. We had the movie, it was a great success. We had lots of youngsters coming, and their parents, and board members, and everyone was very, very generous, and we got ahold of a veteran, George Tomas, who I know from church, and he was our liaison to give the valuables that we collected, which were personal hygiene items, and we delivered them over to the VA hospital, and we got a letter from the VA hospital that Abby sent.
So it's from the program manager of volunteer services from Castle Point, and she said, "On behalf of our veterans at the Castle Point campus, VA Hudson Valley Healthcare System, I want to express my heartfelt thanks to you and the students of the National Honor Society for the monetary cash donation in the amount of $110 and the 150 personal hygiene items. The cash was deposited in the general post fund, which will be used to purchase items needed for our veterans. The personal hygiene items are given to the recreation staff for distribution to our veterans in the community living centers. It is wonderful to have young men and women interested and supporting our veterans. The commitment you have shown demonstrates your concern for America's heroes. Again, thank you for caring and for all your hard work at your movie night event with the Beacon community members. May you all have a great school year."
All right, so then our next order of business as National Honor Society is our Legacy Project, which is coming up on April 14th, and we are focusing on autism awareness. So we're having a Go Blue Day here at the high school. We're hoping that everyone, and high school teachers and students and staff, will all wear blue that day. We're going to put up some posters, we're going to try to make the school as blue as we can, because that's the color for autism awareness. Also that day, we're going to have two assemblies during the day, one for the upperclassmen, one for the underclassmen, that the National Honor Society is preparing, that will help teach you about autism and what it is, and, you know, because there are students in the school with autism, and one in 62 children have autism now, so it's becoming a big deal. So it's important for us all to learn about. So we're going to have two assemblies during the day for the students, and we're also having one that night at 6:30 here in the theater for the community and students and staff of other schools in the district. And we started already by collecting donations for autism during lunch periods, and we have blue-up bracelets and blue puzzle piece pins, and when you donate, you can get one of those and write your name on a puzzle piece of paper, and we're making a big banner outside in the lobby. So hopefully, by the time April 14th comes around, we'll have a giant banner full of everyone's name that helped donate to the cause. So that's the big goal here, and this is our Legacy Project, so we hope that every year there can be an autism awareness event run by the National Honor Society here at Beacon High School.
Well, also, sorry, we're also going out to the community, and hopefully, we can get all of Beacon to blue on April 14th as part of the autism awareness. At least, that's our, that's our hope. And when we say Legacy Project, the valuables for veterans was a Legacy Project by another National Honor Society group years ago, because we're more years' children, but this is the 2015 class Legacy Project of Autism Awareness. Hopefully, we'll be able to do this every year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any parent groups tonight? Open to the public. There wasn't anyone listed, but did anyone wish to speak? Comes to our superintendent's report.
The first part of my report is actually, I can sit back and relax, because I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Karen Kellogg, and she's going to give us some feedback from the wonderful conference day that she was instrumental in leading the planning and getting people here, so.
Thank you. So I'm going to do my best to get my PowerPoint up here. So just give me one second.
Well, Mrs. Kellogg is getting that up.
I'm sorry.
I will share with you that we've had two parent evenings so far. The first parent evening was for middle and high school parents, for the parent portal, and we right now have over 400 parents who are on and using the parent portal. We're really pleased with that, that parents have embraced the parent portal. And our second evening was a middle school, high school evening, and we had several different presenters that evening. We had a presentation about transitions for special education students. We had presentations on Castle Learning, a resource that parents can use at home to help students prepare for state assessments and/or regents. We had a presentation by our guidance counselors about life after school, post-secondary options, and so it was, I want to say thank you to all of the staff that came out that evening to work with the parents. We have a session coming Wednesday night, and Wednesday night is the athletic night. Mr. Nemeczek will be back, he's bringing a couple of coaches, and also one of our guidance counselors who will be available to speak about NCAA regulations and rules, and you'll also hear about eligibility for Mr. Nemeczek and information about the sports program, both the modified, if you stay, if you choose to stay, middle school modified will be from 6 to 7 o'clock, and from 7 to 8 o'clock will be varsity and JV sports. So I invite all of the public and parents to please come. We have light refreshments, and we also have activities for students from grades 3 through 8 in the gymnasium, so that the parents can bring their children and enjoy the presentation while one of our phys ed teachers is providing some activities in the gym.
Okay, thank you. Well, by all accounts, we had a really positive, I think, overall experience for our superintendent's conference day, and what we did was, we had an evaluation forum that we had all of the participants complete, and so what I tried to do here is summarize the results of that for you. So we had some primary objectives, we had a number of courses for them to choose from, which I know you all know, and really, basically, the overwhelming response was, yes, many of them, the participants left with new ideas to improve reading instruction, increase student achievement, and curiosity. What I handed out to you was a copy of the PowerPoint that I'm going to share with you quickly, and the other handout is from the keynote speaker's address. She talked about collaboration and building curiosity in the 21st century, so it all, it blended really well together, and the breakout sessions aligned with, with the central message. So the workshops were on point. How well skills covered improved student learning? Many of the participants said that the new ideas will be implemented. One of the technology courses that we have is Castle Learning, there was a demonstration about that the other night to one of our parent meetings, but a lot of the teachers that weren't understanding the program really got some benefit from that. They want to talk more with their colleagues, and the information that was presented was relevant, clear, and will transfer into the classroom. How was I actively engaged in the workshops? Those are some of the examples that, that the respondents said, that they, how they were an active participant, and they were engaged in group discussions, hands-on learning. Would I recommend this day? Yes, overall, the comments were, they were very happy to choose courses that were of interest and applicable to their field of work. They really enjoyed the reading strategies workshops. The presenters were well-received, and really, really felt that it was positive to have this opportunity to have a full day of learning where they had choices. So there were three breakout sessions after the keynote, so it was a full day till 3 o'clock. What will I do differently? And this is where there's more bullets than in anywhere else, and I think that's really the true measure of learning, when people can walk away and really transfer the information. So you can see some of the things that they will do differently, that they said they would do differently. And there was quite a bit of, I want to again thank Mr. Mulhern and Mrs. Triasi for helping us pull together some very applicable special education kinds of courses around autism, and our occupation, our speech pathologists had workshops that they were working on in guidance. There were just a number of additional workshops that could really be applicable for all teachers, no matter what their discipline. So there is, in the second bullet, an attempt to de-escalate student conflict by focusing on preventative rather than punitive modifications were some things that people walked away with. So I won't read them all, but you can see there's quite a list there. And also here, infusing wonder and curiosity, engaging students, and these are themes that have been coming up all along, and some of what, some of our presenters are working on throughout the year. We have folks from RSC Task coming in, Mr. England, he's doing a number on engagement. One of, these were the two books that his course reflected on Carol Dweck's work of growth mindset, a growth mentality as opposed to a fixed mentality, and an explicit direct instruction. And we have some of our, our schools working on book studies on, on books like this with Bob. So those are just some additional examples. What support can, can we provide as a district wanting to do it again and more often? They want to class contact time with some of the presenters, Steph Harvey, Doug Ricketts, Bob England, who I just mentioned, and those are, those are in the works. We're planning those as we speak, and Doug Ricketts is in district as well in many of the schools. He's got a strong background in English language learning, and he's, but it's for all students, really, and the, the teachers have been very, responded very well to him. Some more materials, emphasis on standards, more emphasis on standards, less on the modules, things of that nature, more nonfiction, collaborative time. So the takeaways that I glean from all, looking at all of these, these responses, is that a workshop like this or a day like this is very relevant. It is a paradigm shift in thinking about teaching and learning from the standpoint that, you know, we are a growth model, and as professionals, we need time like this to come together to learn, and to grow, and to share. And also, you, making sure that we've included the teaching assistance was, was also very meaningful, and we want to do more of that. As with any kind of, you know, a project of this nature, I learned about, you know, more communication upfront. Logistically, there were some things that I learned, and I wanted to make sure that next time going forward, we are buttoned up with all of the presenters, not just a week before, but sooner than that, and also seeing what we can do logistically in the high school to make sure that we're using all of the space more effectively, maybe having everything on one floor as opposed to going up and down, that kind of thing. So, so there are still things I want to do, but we have, we'd like to continue to work with these folks. And when I, when we're bringing in these people, please understand too, it's largely due to title funding, so grant money is in title funding. And I want to leave you with a quote that, that was in, I think it was Steph's handout, that every effort must be made in childhood to teach the young to use their own minds. For one thing is sure, if they don't make up their own minds, someone will do it for them, and who could argue with Eleanor Roosevelt? So that's my little report.
Thank you, Mrs. Kellogg. I'm coming over there because my, part of my report is over there as well, this PowerPoint.
I may not have brought it back to you.
That's all right. Okay, that's all right. So one of the first things that I want to talk about are actually some bus forms, busing forms, for parents who are requesting transportation to non-public schools and/or alternative site, which would be parents who are requesting busing to daycare centers. And I just want you to know that the form that you need is on the website, and I want to show you where that is. Well, let's just do this. Okay, so if you go to our website, it's kind of hidden a little bit there, but I did, I was able to find it. So if you go on this strip and click on the Parents button, and go down to File and Documents, Files and Documents, instead of clicking here on Forms and Documents, you need to click on Show All Folders, and as you go down, you will find the Transportation folder. All you need to do is click there, and Forms and Documents will appear, and then you will see that right here is the Transportation Request for Private Parochial Schools for 1516, and also the General Transportation Request Form, and this is for parents who are asking us to bus to daycare. The rules are on both of the forms, I brought some this evening, if you need them, they're over there, you're welcome to pick them up on your way out. The second thing that I brought this evening is, I brought some information about race and ethnicity, and, that I wanted to share, that comes, the information comes both from our BEDS data and the EEO5 report. So what I wanted to do was set a context to look at race and ethnicity by looking at how the United States is made up, how New York State is made up, and then how we look in Beacon. So I was able to find, this was the most recent information, I was able to find the census from 2010, that says highlighted here, and here are the percentages. I put, took those percentages because these are the same, same subgroups that the state education department uses. This is for the United States in general. When we look across the United States, I don't need to read this to you, I will put this up on the website, we'll have this up this week on the website, 63.7% is Caucasian. These are all percentages, 12.2% African American, et cetera, and you can see all of the subgroups for the United States. We could then compare that to, this is all of Beacon staff in the Beacon School District, and so we have a 77% Caucasian, 10% African American, 12% Hispanic, and if you flip back and forth, the one thing that really jumps out from my point of view is that we're, there are some subgroups that we, we don't show at all. So in terms of diversity, we lack diversity in some of these other subgroups that, that the state and the United States takes a look at. But we say, we follow the same pattern in that there are more Hispanic or Latino than African American, and that's the same pattern here. This information comes from New York State in looking at principals across the state. And again, you can take a look at these percentages, it's about 75% Caucasian, and then the rest is made up of all of the other subgroups, but here we see the opposite, where African American is higher than Hispanic. When we compare that to Beacon, we see 83% Caucasian and 17% African American, and again, we're missing a lot of the subgroups in our diversity. Here are assistant principals, with Caucasian being 63%, and African American again making up 21%. When you look at, compare that to Beacon, we have 75% Caucasian, 25% African American, again, missing all the other subgroups. This is New York State teachers, 81% Caucasian, 8% African American, 6% Hispanic. In Beacon, our teachers are 86% Caucasian, 4% African American, 9% Hispanic, and we do have some of those other subgroups there. And then I also wanted to share from the BEDS point, I did not make a pie chart, but our demographic of students has changed dramatically from the last time that I was up here talking about ethnicity. At that time, we were about 49% Caucasian, and about, almost even, 20, about 25% African American, about 25% Hispanic, and that has changed rather dramatically. Now, when we look at our Caucasian, I'm sorry, I lost my place, here we go. We are, according to the BEDS data, we are 47%, so we dropped a little bit in Caucasian. Our African American is 18%, and our Hispanic 26.9, so 27%. So our Hispanic population has increased, and our African American population has decreased. And then we have the rest, the rest of the population, we do have a few in some of those other smaller subgroups. So as we look at our adult population, our student population is changing as well. I'm going to stay right here to finish my report. This past week, on Monday evening, I believe, we had an action team report out. The action teams come from the original dropout forum that happened last year. These are the four areas that the research shows has the most influence on students dropping out. And each team did a report out very quickly. The District K-12 Attendance Team has, is actually collected actual data of our own student absenteeism, and the state says that any students who are absent 10 or more days, 10 to 19 days are chronic, have chronic absenteeism, and we do have some students who fall into that category, and we have students who have 20 or more days of absenteeism. And in the work that they were doing, they put points on the map, and they found that the absenteeism, those students with high absenteeism, came from similar areas, so they clustered across the district. And they tended to be students who have, who are just beyond the busing limit. So they're, they're taking a look at that, and that's kind of interesting information. One of our schools has the highest rate of absenteeism, and it is a school that does not have a sidewalk that leads to the school. And as you know, we had some pretty cold days this winter, and we had a lot of snow, and when you don't have a sidewalk to walk on, you're walking through the snow, so they're, they're uncovering some interesting information that they're going to have to take a little bit more look at, and actually, all the, all the teams do. The second group that reported was Connecting Students to School and Community, and this team, very interesting, had some students on the team. They started out as an adult team, talking about, well, here's what we think students want, and then the student voice came in and said, well, wait a minute, we, we may think a little bit differently than that. So that team is now ready to do some focus groups with our students, and they will take a wide variety of, of students from different subgroups, and they've developed their questions, and those forums are going to begin fairly soon. The third group is Parent Education. This group has been diligent about meeting, and they've met quite a bit, they're, they're way out of the other groups. They already developed and administered a survey both to students and to parents, and they had some preliminary information to share, but they are also in the process of reviewing that data. The last team was Creating a Culture of Care and Respect, and they have spent some time even just defining the word culture and what we mean by that, and we are talking about measures, observable measures. If we had a culture of care and respect in the district, then what would we see or hear? We're going to do some focus groups with students and with the community, going out to the community as well, to gather information, putting it together to make some final recommendations. So that was the follow-up from the action teams. They will continue to work until at least June, and then we'll see where they go from there. We have, working with Ms. Atwell and the Parent Communicator, we have scheduled Carley's Crusade, which we will have a parent evening in April, so I'll be watching for that date. I think it's something that parents, it is a K-12 program, and there's a little something there for everybody. Part of the program will talk about bullying, part of the program is going to talk about the use of the internet and being safe on the internet, which is very important, and it's also going to talk about cyberbullying and what is happening on the internet. So I encourage parents to come and attend that evening in April, and we'll have that date out soon. And that's my report.
I do. I'll go first. I just wanted to provide an update regarding some of the policies on tonight's agenda. So we have the second read of three policies that we had looked at for the first time last week, and we will, the policy committee obviously has recommended these to the board, and if the board votes tonight, these will then become approved adopted policies. One is on equal opportunity and non-discrimination, one is on sexual harassment, and the final is student harassment and bullying prevention and intervention. Our next policy meeting is on April 13th at 6:30 PM at the district office, and we'll be
And we'll be moving on and continuing in our ongoing work of doing policies.
I have some comments. The Dutchess County School Board Association meeting is not this Thursday, but next Thursday. That is April 2nd. So it's the first Thursday in the month, so I will be attending. So if anybody would like to go with me, let me know, and I will be happy to pick you up and drive you there, so I have company. I also wanted to mention, sort of related to your discussion on ethnicity, I had looked at an interactive map based on the census data. So that, you know, it only comes out every 10 years, so it's only a couple of years old, so it's not too bad. And you can drill down and look at it at any level across the United States. And of course, I focus on our area around here. And what I found interesting, if you look at areas such as Long Island, New York City, it's obvious, looking at that, there's clusters of African-American, there's clusters of Hispanic, there's clusters of whites, there's clusters of Asian, you know what I mean? And there's some mixing, but there's a lot of obvious areas where it's really one ethnicity. You come up to this area, you look at some of the cities, the same thing. You'll see clusters of different groups. Look at Beacon, you don't see any clusters at all, which I thought was really nice. No matter how far you drill into it, it's, you see, looks like just, you know, they have colored dots for the different areas. But you can't really just say, oh, there's a cluster here or a cluster there. It's pretty much spread almost evenly across. Now, I mean, I'm sure someone in New York can say, well, there's more people of that type over there versus here. But really, looking at that, it really looked like it's a very blended community, which I always thought was a good thing. And I certainly know that, you know, my own children's exposure, when I grew up, it was, you really weren't exposed to a lot of different groups. And the thing about Beacon is, I think that children are exposed a lot more to a lot more groups than my kids, being out and having gone to college and being in the workforce. It certainly, I think, has benefited them compared to other people who did not get that kind of exposure. So I say kudos to Beacon for that.
I'd just like to comment on the superintendent's conference day. I was able to go for about two, two and a half hours in the morning to see Stephanie Harvey. And it was, it was nice to, she reaffirmed the message of, you know, of curiosity and how we can gauge that curiosity. So it was really nice. And I thought it was very well planned out, Karen, so you did a really great job with that. In the breakout sessions, I heard nothing but great feedback from it. To go along with the book that you mentioned of Mindset with Carol Dweck, there's a really good TED Talk I just wanted to tell you about with Angela Lee Duckworth that talks about grit, and it goes along with the book Mindset.
Okay. Thank you.
I would be remiss, because I thought you were going to talk about it, Bill. The Air Force Band that came last week and provided the free concert. It was very entertaining. It was a brass band and fine-looking gentleman, I have to say.
They're all in their prime.
They're all in their prime. And they were great musicians. And it was really a delightful evening. And so I want to say thank you to them for providing that entertainment for us.
It was very good.
And it was very well attended.
I'm going to pass around. We received a thank you card, a handwritten card, which I love, from Post 666 of Beacon, the Veterans of Foreign Wars, thanking us for approving the school tax veterans exemption. For any of them watching, it was truly our honor to approve that exemption. But I'll pass this around. And then I would just like to thank all the presenters tonight on the budget and to congratulate our athletes that we saw tonight. I had the opportunity to be there for their state qualifiers and to watch them all qualify in those events. And attracting me in itself is very exciting, but to see so many Beacon students really achieving their goals, there's nothing like that. So congratulations to them.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda items 10.02 through 10.11.
Second? Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
That was really easy.
I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn the meeting. Second?